I'd like to call the orders in Maplewood City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 12th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crater. Councilmember Fockingham. Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mayor Quarmus present.
Motion to excuse council people.
Motion to excuse council members Fockingham and Crater.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Council people are excused. Item number five is approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Are there any changes, comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Council agenda is approved. Item number six is public forum for members of the public to address the city council. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Okay. Public forum is now closed. Number seven, are there any announcements?
We have a few. Small Business Saturday is November the 30th. And the Christmas Tree Walk is December 6th from 6:00 to 9:00. Always a great event. Both of them are good events for the city and for the residents.
Any other announcements? Item number eight is the approval of the October 22nd council meeting minutes and close session minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting minutes are going to prove. Karen, item number nine, please.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri to accept a low bid of Warner bodies in the amount of $128,260 for one 2020 International MV607 truck chassis, including refurbishing and remounting of the fire department's rescue truck body with a contingency of $3,500 for a total of $131,760.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Are there any comments or questions? Chief Merrill is here to answer those. As far as the warranty on the portion of the truck that we're purchasing?
It is two years bumper to bumper on limited mileage. The transmission is five years on limited mileage. The engine is three years on limited mileage. And the wiring is done by the body company is five years.
And since we've had problems with the wiring before, what portion of the wiring goes with the body and what portion goes with the truck itself?
So the chassis itself, the truck, that's the cap and essentially the frame and the wheels. That is provided by International. It's, you know, the factory produces that. That's the two years bumper to bumper warranty. The five years is on with the body, the company that's refurbishing the body and all the wiring that they put into it. And we're requiring that all of the wiring that's in the body, the baseboard, toolbox be removed and replaced.
Are there other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Didn't we already do that?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
Yes.
That explains the confusion. Roll call, please.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Resolution is approved, number 19-54.
Item number 10.
Bill 6129 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to Ram Narian of Occidental Group to operate a medicinal marijuana dispensary facility at 7238 Manchester Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Other questions? We have representatives of the ownership group here tonight.
So the conversation that was going on just as I walked up here was regarding the spelling of the name?
I had the wrong spelling down. We'll tweak that for the third and final reading.
And then I guess I sort of heard bits and pieces, but I guess I'd be interested to know a little bit more about the ownership group. You're not the person listed here, that's correct?
No, I am not.
And so there's, are you also an owner in the business?
Yes, I'm an equal owner on the Missouri side of this.
Okay. I had some questions about the like space itself, but if everyone, anyone else had questions general, you can go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to understand a little bit more about the waiting area and check-in. Are those, looking at the drawings, I lost it. There. Is there a separate lobby, then you check in and then you go into a waiting area?
Ideally, do you have?
This, yeah.
So what it is, is the lobby waiting area is right there. And then we're getting the check-in is the check-in window.
Okay.
For, you know, making sure that their medical marijuana card is up to date, they are who they say they are. And things like that.
And then they just stay in that room until, with people who haven't been checked in until they?
Yes, the Department of Health and Senior Services made a rule after the amendment was passed saying that they were only going to allow one customer in an area that has access to medical marijuana. So there's a one-to-one employee to customer ratio in that area. Also, it's a safety thing to have a minimal amount of people in that area.
So you're going to only have one customer in there at a time, is what you're saying? In the actual?
Per employee.
Oh, per employee? And you're planning on having two?
Two to three employees depending. We don't know what sales will be like.
Sure.
We don't know how busy that location will be. We can only make estimates right now. Every state's been very different. Some states only have a 2% adoption rate. Oklahoma has a 5% adoption rate. And those are drastic and when you look at the amount of people using medical programs.
How big is that space? I couldn't quite tell. The other spaces seem to be, I guess I could have done some math, huh?
I'm going to assume that it's right around our target area of 2,500 square feet. Correct me if I'm wrong.
The total area is 2,500 square feet?
I believe so. We were trying to stay within a few hundred feet of that. Just because it just makes sense for the way we plan on building it out.
So the check-in area, that's where the, after everything is checked, that's where the security guard will remotely let somebody through the door into the back area?
Yes, into where we are going to have the products.
Okay.
And even then, the customer really won't have hands on the products in the display cases. They will all be empty containers, just the empty packaging. And then actually behind the employees is where all the actual products are kept.
So the check is shown on the employee's side of the lobby? Is that, so the security guard is on the inside of the facility?
Yes.
So there's some type of electronic entry?
Yes.
Okay, as far as the building itself and the security, I assume that there's regulations, you know, that the state has created?
Absolutely. We're required to have all the property that we are under control over be monitored by first and secondary camera systems. And all of those recordings have to be backed up for three months.
Okay, and who's, who owns the space next door?
That I am not sure of.
Okay, so that's, I don't know, do those two spaces have a common wall?
I have not been to this location, so I'm not sure, but I believe they do. And I do believe that they are owned by the same person, but I don't want to say that it is and not be accurate on that for you.
I'm just, I have a lot of experience with tenant separations and security for just retail stores. And I would assume that this, the security required for this would exceed?
We are using the same security company and going through the same protocols as the sales does. So it's very rigorous. You don't hear about too many diamond sized these days for good reason because of their security. And that's why we're going that route with that company.
I have a question regarding the ADA. It says in the document that there'll be ADA entrance at the rear of the building?
Yeah.
I believe so. I believe that there are steps up front that don't make it too accessible. And we will do everything we can to accommodate anyone with a disability. We don't foresee too much of that happening because Missouri is a state. Actually, we have it in the amendment that will allow delivery. That doesn't necessarily mean that's going to be from our store. But a lot of people that are more disabled than others will most likely take that route.
Okay. Anthony, do you know on the front of that building, it's kind of hard to tell from the photo, if it would be possible to have ADA compliance at the front entrance?
It would, but that's, is that public, you know, it's about a six inch rise, so you need about six feet of ramp. That would come out maybe to the, that first line of the joint in the sidewalk. But that's, that's city property there?
I would have to actually see the actual survey of that site for the most part, you know. It's typically a few feet in front of that building. We've even had some buildings, if you remember the old coffee shop by Marshall that went across into the public right away. The building was built there, so it totally varies. I'd need to see the survey there. theoretically, you could, I mean, it probably could be done that way. I could see that they're probably going to the back because they probably don't own that. But I don't, I would have to see the survey to be able to tell.
So, oh, sorry.
Just going in the back, how does that work with the rules about the security?
Yeah, that was my question.
Well, what we would have to do first is we would have to check their ID, check, you know, their card, everything like they would, just like up front. And then they would just have to be escorted, just them and an employee. Most likely the security guard would be the one doing that.
But then the security, there'd be no security then left in the front?
Everything would be locked up.
Okay.
They would be allowed into the waiting area and then they'd have to wait for the security to get back behind.
So there'd be no one in the store?
To let anybody else in.
During the planning commission, they talked about security as well. They even mentioned that the roof has motion detectors and I guess, I believe your partner mentioned that.
Motion detectors in between the actual, inside the store and the actual roof. Most dispensaries are broken into through the roof. We will also have, you know, motion detectors on the roof itself and between, and then actually in the dispensary. That way, when we have motion detectors, you know, that go off on the roof or in between, we'll be alerted first to not create a burden on the police department to go check it out. And if anything, any more alarms go off, obviously the police would be notified, but it's just the way that we do.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Everything is stored in a safe. It's taken off the display case. This is from the planning commission, put into the safe all night, so.
Yes, what we do at the beginning of each day, we will scan each product out of a safe. And then at the end of the day, we scan it back in. And we do basically a full inventory check every single day, every morning and every night. Also, the safe, they, the state did give us quite a bit of leniency on how we plan on doing things because they wanted to see what group does what. I believe in our application, we said we will be using a two and a half ton safe that we will be keeping all of the products in at night.
And what about cash? You know, it's a cash business, so are you using like a guarded security to come pick up your cash or is that?
We're hoping to do as little as possible with cash. We have been lucky. We have a bank account with Triad. They are aware of what we're doing. We're one of less than, I believe, 50 groups that actually has access to banking. So we will be able to accept credit cards.
Okay.
And debit cards.
Is there a limit on the amount of product that you, each store can have?
There's no limit on the amount of product the store can have at the time. There is a limit on purchase amounts for people. No one can purchase more than four ounces in a 30-day period. So I guess if somebody wanted to only go to the dispensary once a month, they legally could purchase the four ounces, four ounces at one time. They could come by once a week and do an ounce a week. Or however they see fit, or maybe just an ounce for the entire month.
Do you guys have any anticipated sales amounts you think you'll do? Or are you just not sure?
Well, it's very difficult to tell. Our initiative is very similar to what Oklahoma had. And they are currently at a 5% adoption rate. And so that would be very large on, you know, create a very large amount of people looking to purchase.
Okay.
MU also did a study though. They're, they said, according to their economic development professor, they're only expecting 20,000 patients in the state of Missouri by 2022. And we've already surpassed 20,000.
Right.
So that goes to show some very intelligent people have gone very far on one side and then we can look at other states and say, well, it could be a lot different.
Okay.
So there's just no way to tell.
Sure, thank you.
Are there other questions? Roll call, please. What? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading.
Excuse me. Bill 6129 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to Ram Narian of Occidental Group to operate a medicinal marijuana dispensary facility at 7238 Manchester Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number 11, please.
Bill 6130 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance 5573 of the Maplewood Code of Ordinances as amended by amending chapter 50, traffic and motor vehicles. Section 50 dash 243, other prohibitions on parking by amending Cherry Street, 3100 block, west side of street near Elm Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Are there any questions? Did they approach?
I think they must have talked to Sean.
Councilmember Fockingham. Okay, did they approach?
I had asked Anthony a question and got some helpful information just now, trying to understand if there was, what the general rules were about parking next to corners and stop signs.
I know they refer to it as daylighting. The idea is to create better sight distance, so the further away the vehicles are from those intersections, you obviously have a much better visibility for pedestrians and vehicles across traffic. 20 is ideal. Maplewood, considering parking isn't such a premium, we have a lot of intersections that don't meet this requirement. But again, it's just a preferred requirement.
I mean, that's a tight, that's a tight space and we have a lot of parking up and down there, so I, I mean, I.
So you start taking parking spaces away, people get.
I mean, they're going to just go further down the street, but that's, I mean, that's behind me. But that is a sort of a very narrow street there and it's, you know, cars are parked all on our street and then on theirs. So trying to navigate that is pretty tricky.
I believe Sandy probably is, lives on probably one of the most narrow streets in town. Or even Burgess, which we talk about a lot, is extremely narrow, but Cherry is very narrow. Like you said, if you have a car parked too close to the intersection, you're trying to get around there.
Yeah.
Especially if you have a car heading northbound and you're trying to turn southbound, it's very difficult. So I went out and paced it. You have about 66 feet there. If you're this way, we'd give yourself plenty of additional space to have two cars parking there without pushing it too far south. If you remember the intersection, we don't want to block in the driveway of that owner on the corner.
Right.
So this would give us plenty of room to park two vehicles and should give you a much better turning radius and a little bit better sight, sight distance as well, or they refer to it as daylighting.
You selected the west side of the street as opposed to east because of the?
There's no parking on the east side currently.
That's how narrow it is. We get a lot of cut through when there's trains, so.
And so just in general, is, do we sort of not specify anything and then just put up a no parking sign on an as-needed basis?
Are we talking about this example or are you just saying?
For like any corner in the residential street area within Maplewood. We sort of don't put any parking regulations?
Many years ago, the fire chiefs and public work extractors went out and they basically went through and added many. This preceded my time. And their principal concern was working fire trucks to get through and safety trucks. And that was the principle and basically the overriding concern they looked at and also a way to keep as much parking as possible. Because parking is obviously at a premium. If you went around and did every intersection and made it ideal, you would have probably a lot of people that are upset about losing parking because every time you take away a space, it pushes vehicles in front of somebody else's homes. But whenever we get an issue brought to our attention, we go out and look it over. And that's what I did here. Sean, Councilmember Fockingham, was the one who was actually notified via the website and I was copied on it. So I went out and did the analysis, sent it to Sean. He said, let me talk to some neighbors first, and that's how we got this ordinance.
Are there any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, please.
Bill 6130 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance 5573 of the Maplewood Code of Ordinances as amended by amending chapter 50, traffic and motor vehicles. Section 50 dash 243, other prohibitions on parking by amending Cherry Street, 3100 block, west side of street near Elm Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number 12, please.
Bill 6131 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute an STP urban program agreement between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the City of Maplewood for project number STP 5536, TIP 6902-20, Manchester Road, Phase 4.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second. As far as questions, no engineering has been done yet on this project?
No, sir. Once this is done, the engineering is the next step.
And the city will have the ability to review the engineer drawings and design?
Will actually prepare them.
Are there, besides pedestrian crossing in the middle of 7300, are there any other changes to parking?
No, although that will be part of the design. The thought is, is when we create, if anyone's not aware that we haven't talked about it, if you think in front of Boogaloo, there's probably a good mid-block point, you have an existing fire hydrant there. And since you have no parking there anyway, the thought was put a bump out to create a pedestrian walk there. People dart across the middle of that block a lot. So it'd be a, basically where you could, it wouldn't stop traffic, but you'd push a signal and a flashing pedestrian sign would at least alert vehicles that someone is crossing. That would give you a safe middle passage. And then across the other side is possibly where we would restructure some of that parking. You've got some large turning movements in and out of the Schnook Center. And so we would like to, we may remove a space on the south side. If we do, we'd add a space on the north side or shift it around. There's also, I also want to look at the intersection of Sutton and Manchester. It would be the southeast corner in front of kind of where Edgewild is, the restaurant. Elmwood, thank you, sorry. Possibly doing a bump out there just to make it a little safer crossing. And these will all be things we'll look at from a design standpoint. Nothing's been approved yet except for the crosswalk in the center. But we'd like to make it a little more pedestrian friendly if at all possible without losing parking spaces.
In fact, our bill's only 20%. Do we know what the total amount?
Yeah. I, I.
It says in the contract that they won't pay more than.
80% is around 1.2. I thought that's what it was.
That says what they won't pay more than.
Yeah, so you want 20% is what we're paying. Their max is 1.2. I budgeted 20 to make sure we wouldn't be getting into the situations in the past where if you go over, the city pays a higher percentage. Yeah, it's going to basically be a complete resurfacing. We believe a lot of the sidewalks will need to be repaired, make them more ADA accessible.
Is there any utility work?
No, no major utility work. It's just mostly going to be a resurface.
Questions?
Is there any possib, well, probabl, probability within this project of creating additional shade on the Schnooks side of the street, adding trees?
We could do it if we, if we have additional money left over, or we could just take it out of our capital improvement road projects and do some. As I said, I believe some of those curb cuts will be adjusted slightly because we're going to be losing a space on the north side as we go across. And there's even an opportunity for some outdoor seating outside of Boogaloo and the adjacent restaurant there too, so we could maybe even create a spot there. We're going to have that crosswalk there. We've already got the fire hydrant there. You're already, you're already out one space. You could possibly create additional space, but I believe, I speak for most of the business district when they say we don't want to lose parking if at all possible. But we could definitely add some amenities to make it a little more pedestrian friendly.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to see more trees on the, whatever side that is, the Schnook side of the street. Because it's.
The north side?
We've added them in every project we've done so far. We haven't even got with a landscape architect, but that's what I'm sure they'll end up suggesting. If you remember on Manchester Phase 3, which was basically west of city hall, we added some by the metro link station by the Vovol dealership, quite a bit by Midwest Pool. Any chance we can do to add some greenery, we do. I can tell you Schnooks probably won't be wanting a lot of vertical elements or tall wide trees with a wide canopy because they don't want to get into visibility issues. But there are species of trees that are more columnar in shape that we could potentially add. We want to get the tree situation in the business district looking a little better than it is. It's in pretty bad shape right now. Those trees are, are, a lot of them have died and just been temporarily replaced waiting for this project.
Okay, good.
The developers, I understand they're putting in a gazebo?
Yes, they're proposing to put a gazebo in there. We're talking with ByState. The gazebo would basically serve as their bus stop there. They're asking to remove that bus shelter.
So?
They'd be able to sit at the gazebo.
Would that be at the Sutton intersection?
Yes, the northeast intersection. It's on the designer view board packet. Actually, there's a rendering of it. I think it went out Friday.
I notice they're doing some other work along the, along Manchester there, taking out some of the retaining walls. Is that maintenance work or?
Talking about the Schnooks?
Yeah.
They're doing some different landscaping and they're doing, it's a part of their overall improvements to that project. I haven't looked at those plans over in a long time, so I can't tell you exactly what work they're doing now, but.
Do those plants include any vertical plantings?
They're going to, they will be, but there'll be some replacement plantings where if there's a tree, they're not adding more trees. If they take a tree down, they're replacing the tree.
The city property stops at the edge of the sidewalk?
No, it goes back a little bit behind there. They have, their property comes back just a hair by that sidewalk. I mean, it's almost right at the sidewalk, maybe about a foot behind.
Okay, so the suggestion that some trees be added, that would have to be coordinated with the, okay.
That's why I said I'm not sure. I'm not sure they're going to want that, but that doesn't mean we couldn't add some, some tree wells with the sidewalk. That's a possibility, like we have on the south side. Unfortunately, most of those have. That's a possibility, like we have on the south side, unfortunately, most of those have died. And really what that was, is the tree grates were, um, they basically didn't allow any moisture in there, and they also flattened the soil around those trees. So the tree grates essentially is what killed most of those trees. You'll notice the new designs are much more friendly to the tree's survival. They're like the ones we had, uh, on Manchester Three, where it's sunken a bit and allows a lot more water to get into the tree.
Are there any other questions?
Um, I had one quick question. There's the, um, the section on page thirty of the packet. Um, it talks about the disadvantaged business enterprises. Um, and so the commission advises the city of required goals for participation by DBEs to be included in the city's proposal. And is that, um, required goals relative to the federal highway administration program, or?
If we're getting a federal grant, we do need to use a certain percentage of DBEs, and we always do on all of our federal projects, that's one of their requirements.
Okay. Do we also, I know that St. Louis County has a new provision about minority and women-owned business enterprise program. Do we do any following for their subcontracts, do we follow county?
Are you talking about our local roads, or are we talking, this one we absolutely will. We follow the, the federal requirements for this, because this is federally funded. So, I can't, I don't know the exact percentage, but...
And does it specify a proportion for subcontracts, is that?
As long, it, a lot of times it is, it's solely a subcontractor, you know what I mean? So a lot of times whoever the contractor we hire is, they have to make, if, if they're not a DBE, they have to make sure some of their subs are DBEs to make sure the percentage of the overall contract meets the DBE requirements.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-one thirty-one, and ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute an STP urban program agreement between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the city of Maplewood for project number STP five-five-three-six, TIP sixty-nine-oh-two dash twenty, Manchester Road, Phase Four.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Uh, item number thirteen, please.
Bill sixty-one thirty-two, and ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance five-five-seven-three as amended. Chapter forty-four subdivisions, section forty-four dash sixteen, minor boundary adjustments. Subsection A of the city code to allow lot consolidation.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion, a second. Uh, I, this has gone through planning and zoning?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, I don't see any reason why it can't be a staff decision, given the, uh, the parameters. Uh, does anyone have any questions?
Could you just, I'm sorry, explain to me briefly what this is? You're just saying any lot consolidation, we don't, you don't have to bring it to us, is that?
Correct, um, good example, the tattoo shop.
Yeah, up there.
Yeah, that we just approved, that those are actually three separate parcels.
Okay.
Um, the QuickTrip over here at the corner, that, the newly newer QuickTrip, that was eight different lots. Um, historically, people used to build across lot lines and, and, or if they had multiple lots, the county would essentially show it as one, one address, one locator number, and essentially consolidate those lots via, via all the taxing records. So for all practical purposes, most people assume that if there's a structure on one lot, there may be only one lot. A lot of times through, when people go through a purchase like this, they'll do the record, they'll do, they'll go through the deeds and go through the, uh, the record plats, and they'll realize there's multiple lots on this. So it basically avoids a situation where somebody has to come, come through that process, they can just do it administratively. I approve boundary adjustments, and I probably do maybe one or two a year.
Okay.
Where basically people may be adjusting a lot line, but I've always done the, if it's gonna be consolidating lots, I've always gone through, which is kind of the opposite of what you think of a subdivision, you're actually consolidating lots, you're not creating new lots or subdividing, making it more lots. So we just avoid a situation where somebody wants to come through and just, for, a lot of times for, you know, property paperwork purposes, they want to consolidate these lots. They may not even be building across these lots in some cases, and they just want to clean it up. I can just do this administratively, actually Kirkwood does this, and our city attorney asked, "Have we ever looked into this?" I said, "I didn't realize we could." He said, "You absolutely can." And so, the minute I realized we could, I jumped at making this amendment. It'll just make it a lot easier for people coming through Maplewood, uh, selling property, transferring ownership, it'll make it a lot easier, they can just get it done. Takes me probably fifteen minutes to review a, a plat, and we don't have to run through three separate meetings and also cost more money that way as well for these people.
So if the consolidated lot, for some reason, doesn't comply with the zoning ordinance?
I would not approve it, um, they have to go...
Can they go to Board of Adjustment?
They can go to the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
Simply lot consolidations, if there's a subdivision, a traditional subdivision, it would still have to go before the city council, if you're creating additional lots.
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-one thirty-two, and ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance five-five-seven-three as amended. Chapter forty-four subdivisions, section forty-four dash sixteen, minor boundary adjustments. Subsection A of the city code to allow lot consolidations.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number fourteen, please.
Bill sixty-one thirty-three, and ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute a user agreement between St. Louis County and the city of Maplewood for use of the St. Louis County Agency's interoperable radio system.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion, a second. Uh, are all the, if all the communities in St. Louis County subscribe to, uh, this system?
Um, I can't say that for certain, I know the overwhelming majority do.
Because the list I saw...
It was very extensive.
Yeah, but it wasn't ninety something.
No. But a lot of them, for example, you might see Frontenac on there, but you're not gonna see Huntley, because they provide the same services. You're not gonna see Oakland on there, because Kirkwood provides services for them. So even though you didn't see eighty-nine, that doesn't mean they're not covered by the, the system.
Okay. Does anyone have questions? We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-one thirty-three, and ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute a user agreement between St. Louis County and the city of Maplewood for use of the St. Louis County Agency's interoperable radio system.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number fifteen.
Bill sixty-one twenty-eight, and ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract between the city of Maplewood and St. Louis County for mosquito and rodent control services.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion, a second, are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Bill sixty-one twenty-eight is approved, ordinance number five-nine-two-three.
Item number sixteen, sixteen is the discussion of amendments to the NB, CB, CB one and AB zoning districts. We do have a zoning map here, if you are not familiar with the, uh, zoning districts. Uh, who would like to start the discussion?
Where is the zoning map?
Where's the zoning, oh, it's on the floor over there.
I do have a question in the first section, so...
I was gonna say, I would like to see one.
I'd love to have a brief explanation. Your neighborhood business is, is, it's, it's very, very, very limited throughout town. It's basically some corner, corner locations, there's a couple spots on Sutton. Uh, again, it's a, who knows why, but Yatza Automotive is actually zone neighborhood business, it shouldn't be, it's a non-conforming use. There's just a handful of neighborhood business. Um, when you think of community business, it's best to think of, and again, there's some other exceptions, kind of the newer portion of Sutton, and basically Manchester Road, uh, Big Bend east to the city limits is most likely, is mostly CB or community business. So neighborhood business is the most restrictive, and you've got community business, which is a little step up, a little more permissible. And within this community business district is roughly the seventy-three and, 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 uh, seventy-two hundred blocks of Manchester, basically from southwest to Sutton, is what we refer to as our CB one district. A lot of times it's referred to as a retail-only district, um, which is the most restrictive we have in town. Remember, within this district, the second floor of this district is actually zone CB, not CB one. Um, and then simply, when you think of AB, for the most part, it's predominantly Big Bend arterial business, and then basically in front of City Hall, City Hall is right, is this green, public activity in the schools right here, and then basically all these gray are all AB as well. Can, can everyone see that?
Yeah, I, I just walked down there and saw it.
So what the planning commission did is we've been getting together and going through, basically just, a lot of it is, many, some of these uses are, uh, were amended over many, many years, and they were essentially dropped in. In some cases, a use was created where it had conflicting language within the exact same zo-, zoning district. In some districts, it allowed zoning administrator authority for approval, but in other districts it didn't. Some required the planning commission, uh, reviews as opposed to zoning administrator reviews. Um, so what I did is I went through and got any recent amendments that had not been codified yet. We went through and we went and added, kind of updated some language where you might see a, you know, beauty parlor, people think of hair salons now. Um, we got rid of some uses that may or may not have, basically don't exist anymore. Um, we added language, you know, we're talking about urgent care centers and la-, you know, those are, that's something a little more recent, a little more recent trend. Uh, we basically tried to move the, the uses where we believe they, they belonged, whether it be permitted, not permitted at all, or conditional uses. Um, one thing we did with this amendment that is a little, a little more unique is, uh, not sure if every member was here when we did this, but within the CB one district, which is basically at seventy-three, seventy-two hundred block of Manchester, we used to have restaurants come through here repeatedly, because every time a conditional use changes, every time these restaurants change ownership, a new conditional use permit is required. That's a forty-five to sixty-day process, which is according, and based on other cities, is, is expedited. But it still costs these small restaurateurs money and time, because they're, they wanna, they wanna get an answer, "Hey, can I move in here?" And so, they have to pay anywhere from four hundred and thirty to four hundred and fifty dollars just for the application fee. They have to wait forty-five to sixty days, and if it was simply replacing another restaurant with a different restaurant, we've never turned them down. So we basically said, "If you are replacing a restaurant with another restaurant that's similar, it's permitted." Um, if it's a new restaurant, I can't think of what's the, is it tapped, is that the? Tap was an example, where that was a new restaurant, so they still had to go back before and get a conditional use permit. Um, we've added that language to the CB district, now we've expanded that. So, um, you know, if a restaurant replaces another restaurant, they don't need to come before the conditional use permit process and before the city council and planning commission. Um, remember, the Thai restaurant, the Thai table, or I think it's Thai table, that was a, that was not a restaurant use before, they built that kitchen out. So that would be an example where we would have them come before you, because you could take a look at that. And the reason you do is parking, you're wanting to make sure there's no, uh, negative impacts where it's a, it's a restaurant that, you know, seats sixty people, and they've got, you know, five parking spaces, and they're gonna obviously create a lot of problem for their neighbors. So you'll still have that ability to look that over. It also gives me the ability to say, "Hey, you're replacing, you know, a very small, kind of a low-impact restaurant with a, you know, a high volatility, that's gonna use a lot more traffic, create a lot more impact, we can, I can still bring it before you if, if I see the need." I really don't see that happening. So we're trying to kind of streamline that process for, for, for our restaurants as well. They, I guess you all know, they seem to turn over pretty quickly and, um, requiring them to come, Sandy, we're on planning commission. That was the first thing we looked at, you know, there was always a, a pattern there where we understood that it had been kind of established, and whether Barry owns a restaurant or I own the restaurant, it's essentially irrelevant, if it's a restaurant and it can go there, we always approved them, so we added that language. Um, if anyone else has any other questions, for the most part, we just, we try to change it to make it a little bit more accommodating to what's actually out there as opposed to, you know, what was kind of a cookie cutter. In the AB district, anytime someone wanted to, uh, which would be Big Bend, uh, wanted to make any sort of amendments, they would have to go get a variance, because they didn't have the lot depth on Big Bend anyway, so we reduced the lot depth requirement. It seemed kind of, uh, ridiculous. Parking setbacks, we used to have fifteen feet, we were in community business, we reduced it to ten. We just don't have any situat-, you know, that, that makes sense if it's a greenfield type of development, based on the, our existing, um, buildings out there and what we have out there, it doesn't make sense to have some of these requirements. So we, we made them a little more restrictive in some areas and softened them in others. But, uh, the planning commission probably spent four months on this, and we went through each and every line on this. Oh, they did a really good job. Assuming this gets approved, we'll move on to, um, the light manufacturing and finish up the planned residential, uh, district requirements. We'll get all the commercial out of the way, and then we'll make our way into the residential code. It's not uncommon, and you'll see, especially when we get into the residential section, you can tell they basically had someone paid someone many, many years ago to adopt our ordinance, and a lot of the language is, I believe it's a lot of east coast, especially within the residential. They're talking about garden-style apartments and elevator apartments, and there's a lot of language in there that doesn't really mirror our community. It's not uncommon when people adopted these codes many years ago.
And in neighborhood, uh, business, you're allowing hair salons, but, uh, are spas and massage and chiropractic are those? I don't see, unless that falls under health, uh, uh, the health-type service which is prohibited. So my question was, was it considered?
Yeah, they want, they wanted that, they did not want that, I see we struck that out on seventeen, they did not want that there.
Okay.
I think the, um, because we actually started with NB when I was still on P and Z. Um, and, and I remember the hair salons, because NB isn't, um, up next to Stone Spiral, that's NB. So, and there's an existing hair salon there, so that's one of the reasons why it's in there. But I think the, you know, uh, more intensive use of a, um, i- in addition to a hair salon, a spa, or something like that, um, it, it's not necessarily compatible with the neighborhood business.
Okay. I, my property at twenty-seven oh-eight Sutton is, I'm gonna need to lease that in September when Sherwood Forest Camp leaves, but that's, that's facing the parking lot. Uh, is that, so that's governed by the, uh, the address on, on Sutton, then?
Yeah, you'd be zone community business.
Okay.
I had a question about something that was taken out, and so bear with me for a minute, because it's kind of long. But I noticed that, I know neighborhood business isn't very large, but, um, the purpose is for things that people need to use frequently or every day. And I noticed that self-service laundries were taken out. Um, and I guess, when I tried to go through, the next place I could find where they were allowed, it's, and I could be wrong, seemed to only be in the arterial business district. And, um, I understand there's probably some environmental things related to that, but I guess I was wondering, maybe, you know, if it... you know, if it couldn't be in a conditional use somewhere closer just because we do have a lot of rental housing. I know whenever I, and even if you don't live in rental housing, sometimes washers and dryers are hard to afford. Um, and so I'm thinking of people being able to be close to them. And it doesn't seem like we have anywhere except along Big Bend that they can be or way, um, down Manchester. So I was just curious about sort of, um, the reasoning for eliminating it here and why it's nowhere else.
It was, it was, it was, they can actually create a negative impact. We actually, a lot of residents, and, and keep in mind, mechanical permits are approved via the county.
Okay.
Right now, we get a lot of complaints about the wash house because of the dryers. So if you have one dryer vent with some fabric softener.
The smell. But can you, are there no, like with the chicken places, there's no remediation you can do to make it?
I haven't. It's extremely costly, but again, it was the idea that they don't even wanna get, they wanna keep that out of the neighborhoods because with one dryer going, you know, the smell is minimal. But when you have, you know, a, a commercial established with a multiple dryers and that, that exhaust coming out, the smell can be, we, we actually get more complaints about that business than we do probably any other business in town because of the smell from the dryers.
Who is they? The planning and zoning or the county? I'm sorry.
The city.
The city, alright.
Yeah. But Barry's been, you, you've been on some of those.
No, I mean, you said they wanted to keep them out. Sorry, I, that's.
Planning commission.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I was the one who brought up the wash house.
And I know, they ca- they talked about it here. Um, okay.
Yeah. And, and I think we actually made it a conditional use if I can remember correctly.
It's not, it's not a conditional use here. It's not, um, it's not.
I think the point that Anthony brought up with regards to St. Louis County reviews mechanical electrical plumbing, that, uh, if, if we approved it and there, there was a problem, uh, I, I think there's some legal issues that we were, we were looking at because I, I don't know if we can tell them, you know, how to, to do their, for instance, their exhausts and their air exchange, things like that, if they're under the jurisdiction of St. Louis County in the international mechanical code.
But you could for the chicken place? I guess that's what I'm, I'm getting confused as I thought.
If you make it a conditional use, we can, we can, we can request it. The, um, but that was permitted and that's what Barry was getting, I believe that's what Barry was getting at. Correct me if I'm wrong, but they basically gave that approval and, and, and that's an example where in hindsight, it would like to have been conditional.
Additional, right, right.
So we had to legally approve it.
Right, I get, yeah.
Nice if it was conditional, we could add some additional requirements. Because those vents direct, they, 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 they exit.
Right.
Directly onto the neighbors.
No, and tha- and I, I get that. And that's why I was saying, like, it, I just didn't see it anywhere. I mean, like even closer in conditionally being able, I mean, I just, I'm thinking about people trying to get to somewhere to do their laundry. It seems like.
We can, this is just a recommendation. The city council can, uh, add or subtract whatever they.
I just wanted to throw it out there.
It's fit. Um, one thing that, that the county did say, which it was, 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 was unfortunate, um, the inspector was, um, uh, extremely helpful. And, and he even told one of the residents on, um, I guess that would be on Elm, who was, um, complaining about it, that the codes that they use, that basically the, the odor standards are basically more catered towards manufacturing uses. And they don't really take into account a residential home being essentially five feet or ten feet, twenty feet, whatever that is away from one of these uses. And so he said, even though they meet our standards, I can see why they would still be, uh, in opposition to it or opposed to it. And it was interesting because I got out of the car with Brian her, and Brian couldn't smell it. And the minute I got out of the car, I could smell it immediately. It d- it does affect different people different ways. So that's why we tried to keep that use out of the neighborhood business because all the neighborhood business uses we have are either adjacent to or basically immediate.
Right, and then, right. Um, but how many, how many does that, I mean, they're not all necessarily that huge, I guess is my point. I mean, you could limit the number of like,
Oh, sure.
machine. I, I'm just, I don't know. I just thought I'd throw that out there. I just noticed that and, um, was just curious about it. Has any other thoughts on that?
Are there other questions with regards to other uses in other districts?
I have a lot. Um, so, um, starting in NB, um, Anthony, on item number twenty-four, where you added book and stationary, just, uh, um, stationary is misspelled.
Uh, what was that?
Um, in NB, um, where you added book and stationary stores, item twenty-four.
Okay.
Stationary is E R Y.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, under number eight, where you have the loft apartment condo, I was wondering why dance studios is a sub-bullet under loft, if that was a.
That was a formatting error. That needs to be over at nine.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It just popped in. Thanks. We drop, drop that in from a prior amendment. Thank you.
Um, I have a question. Okay. I, um, and then if you can just talk to, in this section as well as some of the others about the, um, the floor area ratio or the maximum building coverage.
Is that bulk regulations? Are you talking about that?
Mm-hmm.
Where are you sta- is that what you're getting at? I had a question about that. I just don't know if it's.
I think not quite yet.
They're different? Okay.
Yeah. So.
So you're looking at, uh, minimum lot size. It was just an issue of, there are no neighborhood business district lots that are ten thousand square feet. So if anyone wants to do anything at a deck or anything, they'd have to get a variance. So we basically tried to bring that into what our existing lot sizes are within the NB neighborhood business district.
And then the maximum building coverage, you changed it to none?
Yeah, the, the, because most of these are basically almost built. They're already existing lots and they're basically built across. They would still have to meet setbacks. They still have to meet transitional yard setbacks. So for example, the Icon Construction Building, um, what's that across the street from, uh, The Girls on the Run? I could, wish I could think of the name of that. It used to be Peter Zeichler. That was an example where that was neighborhood business. They still had to meet all those transitional yard setbacks. But, so the building coverage basically was for existing structures in there. We didn't want to create a situation where if someone wanted to put a deck off the back, they'd have to go before the board of adjustment. So it was just bringing it into that existing inventory.
Can I just clarify that? Yours is, that's the bulk regulations, right? So you're saying they were all mostly filling the whole lot anyway? So this isn't, and it's such a small, okay.
And even though there are none, there's still other section, other requirements in there that say, say, say we're gonna knock one of those structures down and build a new one.
Right.
You'd still need to meet transitional yard setback requirements, which is, uh, item C below there.
Okay.
Um.
And D?
Yep. Where, a D, where it talks about, you know, twenty foot.
Okay.
Rear yard with a six foot fence, landscaping, et cetera, which is what that building.
Is. That's a good example.
But if you've got one of those existing structures and you're ninety percent lot coverage and you wanna add possibly an ADA entrance off the rear and you wanna cover it and you're basically adding to that structure, you don't have to go back before the board of adjustment process because you'd be expanding that structure, which would be non-conforming.
That makes sense.
Um, can I just, can you kind of catch me up on item eight under conditional uses there? Like,
Yeah.
What is the purpose of that or what is it, like what is it trying to do?
That is.
How many does it apply to?
That is a very old amendment, the whole new urbanism. Um, this was a prior amendment that was probably approved early two thousands where the whole idea was to try to create within your business districts a live, work, play theme. The idea there, the live, and Maplewood was very apprehensive at the time because of all the apartments we have already to add to it, especially in a retail, commercial district. They wanted to keep, they wanted the revenue from the retail. And the idea was, well, you could create these loft type dwelling units on the second floor, um, of these neighborhood business districts. We were thinking specifically on Sutton. Um, the CB, community business district already allowed apartments on the second floor through a conditional use. So that was just an attempt back in the early two thousands to try to create that live theme within the live, work, play theme. That's, that's not what we added here. That was basically an ordinance that was already amendment that wasn't yet codified.
So does, are there any actual, like, second floor dwellings in the?
Manchester, there are. Um, there's one on Sutton, just, uh, just south of the, uh, Meow House, um, above the gym. Uh, there's actually two, um, on Sutton that I know of. There's probably more. Well, I, I know of at least three on Manchester and two on Sutton.
I, okay. Cause I was wondering if the limit on number of people, if you're just, if you just follow the occupancy permit rules about space, then do you also, does that take care of like how many people are there? So like, you couldn't have a family of five?
It would theoretically. I honestly, I don't know why that was put in there.
So should we take that out?
Looking at C?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, if that's out, that's fine. I know the issue was initially, they were very worried about people were gonna make a run and on the, on the retail district and put a bunch of apartments there. That hasn't transpired. Um, we reduced the thousand square feet. Sandy, if you, you might remember, it was just because again,
Yeah.
what we were worried about never took place. And, and actually the, the people that do live near the business district are really frequenting the, not that this amendment made a big difference, but that was the theme is to try to get people living in the business district, shopping in the business district. It's kind of happened organically as opposed to with this amendment, but that was the idea behind this amendment. That was a planning, uh, it was called new urbanism. It was a, it was all the rage if you went to any planning classes for a while. So, uh, strike C. Is everyone fine with that? I?
Yeah, I'm fine. Yeah.
And the floor area ratio? Is that the point seven five, um, in the NB? Is that, do you foresee that being an issue for any?
I don't. I don't remember why we didn't make any changes to that, to be honest with you. I don't see that as an issue. I'm looking at this vacant sewers. Yeah, I, that D right there, I don't know if that's even necessary back to where, um, Eleanor was talking about either. I guess we could keep that in there. It doesn't hurt. Again, that was, that was a concern when they're.
You don't want just a bunch of.
They were, yeah, they didn't wanna. And that might've even been late nineties when that amendment was done.
So you, so it's like you don't want too many people living above vacant businesses? Is that?
It is, is, is you wanna make sure the commercial space isn't taken up, taken over by the apartments.
Yeah, D kind of seems like a little bit of overkill too.
Mm-hmm. I think now it is. I think at the time to get it approved, people were very concerned about adding apartments within the commercial district. I don't see that as an issue anymore. I don't mind striking it at the, is that what the council would like to see?
This is, if I'm, am I wrong? This is part of the neighborhood business, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, alright. It's very small.
So like halfway down page sixty-seven.
It's a very small amount.
Yeah, alright.
It is. Small.
So we're striking D, is that correct?
On the bulk regulations because the bill, maximum building coverage is, there's no maximum. And then you say that the maximum floor area ratio is point seven five. Floor, floor area ratio is the ratio of the floor area to the land, which would be essentially the same as the, uh,
Oh, we could strike that too then.
Lot coverage.
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have any, the reason, we've got multiple structures that basically go lot to lot. The only thing that would be is if you had a, a new build, which I don't really see happening. I don't mind striking that either.
That just seems to be, uh.
Redundant.
So that's what.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Yeah.
And we'll have an opportunity to.
Oh, yeah. The, I, I figured by giving you this, this is a working copy. Obviously, the formatting hasn't, nothing's been really worked on too tight here, but I figured at least you could see, be a lot easier than if I gave you an ordinance to see what was actually changed or considered.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning commission has put in on this.
And I, I do appreciate the chance to discuss it with you, Anthony, before. Yeah, thank you.
And even if you guys don't make it through tonight, I mean, whenever you want it, whenever you want it, it's done. I mean, again, there's not, nothing earth shattering in here. It's your call. And with the other ordinance amendments, we'll probably have about three or four districts at a time as well.
I did have something that I saw a couple of places, um, in prohibited uses. And I don't know if it's language still used today or if there's different language, but it says, um, other uses, which the plan and zoning commission determine to be of an immoral nature. And I guess I'm just curious how we determine morality?
Yeah, what, what page are you on?
So I see it on seventy-three and then I thought I saw it one other place, but maybe not.
It was in two different places.
And in, on page seventy-six.
I was gonna say it's CB and CB one.
I don't know what that was. Um, just existing language. If you guys want to, uh, change that or if Jackie has any thoughts on that.
Is there like an updated standard for the, that replaces that?
That might've been instituted when you got the, uh, the burlesque.
I mean, I get you, you, I mean, I guess, you know, if it's illegal, you can't do it. If it's not compatible with the other uses, then it shouldn't be allowed anyway.
If it's not listed as permitted, it's not permitted.
Right, so I mean, morality is not.
Right, yeah.
Ob- an objective.
I don't have a problem striking that. Again, I don't see that that would hold up anyway. Jackie might have a different opinion of that. Uh, but if it's not listed as permitted.
Right, I don't, okay.
Do, do you agree?
Yes.
I believe, uh, planning commissioner Sandy Phillips added that language.
Uh, no.
Just kidding. Bad joke, sorry.
Okay, is, is there any further?
I'll strike it everywhere it's at.
Alright, thank you.
With regards to, uh, these recommendations?
I still have more.
Yeah, go for it.
So, I mean, yeah, if, if you guys are, are up for it.
No problem. What, what page are you on now?
Let's go page by page.
Um, I mean, I was, I basically was, um, ready to move to CB. So if everybody's done with NB, um.
Page seventy?
We were almost done with NB anyway.
Yeah, I thought we were done with NB, so.
I thought we were done with that one.
Um, so really my, um, my one comment, well, a couple of comments in CB. Um, under craft beer stores, which we know was, uh, sorry, item number twenty in conditio- I think that's conditional uses. Um, so it's a conditional use for craft beer stores and it specifically states no hard alcohol can be sold on the premises. Um, uh, item B under craft beer stores.
That was, uh, taken, um, again, from the amendment.
Yeah.
At the, uh.
I know why it was done and I don't, I wanna strike it if everybody's up for it because I think there's so many, um, craft s- beer places that could potentially also want to sell craft spirits, um, cause that's the trend.
Isn't that what Von Fass is?
Yeah, I mean, Von Fass has that specifically. I mean, there's something specifically written.
Use that's catered towards Von Fass in there.
So why are we preventing another business to come in and?
I added B, C, and D at the time, uh, when I was on council. Uh, the hard alcohol, uh, you know, that was to allay certain concerns that, that people might have, you know, with regards to it being another liquor store.
Right.
Uh, certainly tobacco and lottery tickets, I think, belong in, in that prohibition.
Right. I don't have a problem with those.
Uh, as far as hard alcohol, you know, yeah, if, if we limit the amount of hard alcohol, uh, by percentage or something like that, that's fine.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you know, you have, you might have another liquor store.
Right.
That was the concern at the time is that it's just going to be a. That was the concern at the time, is that it's just going to be another liquor store.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I think that could certainly be looked at and, and, yeah, I know that, uh, uh, side project, you know, serves, uh, al- other alcoholic beverages, and, uh, there's a lot of crossover these days, you're right.
So are we looking at saying something like, uh?
Percentage of retail sales or something, yeah.
Yeah, like a, uh, no more than twenty percent of retail sales, ten percent, uh, thirty, I'd whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we might talk to some of the retailers to see what.
Okay.
Yeah.
What they're, what they're selling and, uh, we don't wanna preclude it, we just don't want it to be the, uh, the focus of their, their business.
Alright, I'll, I'll throw, I'll talk to some retailers and I'll put a percentage in for the next, uh, amendment. And if that's not satisfactory at that time, you guys can modify it before it's obviously approved, but I'll, uh, I'll talk to David Schlaafle or someone, he may have a good idea about something like that, or Corey King.
Um, also in CB, eh, under the section, uh, two oh nine, is it specifically prohibiting? It, it sounds like we're prohibiting drive-throughs in CB. Um, item B, no business establishment may offer goods or services directly to customers waiting in parked automobiles. Um, it's on the bottom of page seventy-three.
They're talking about parked automobiles, so I don't think that would, uh, apply to drive-throughs.
Like a drive-in, like a Sonic style, is that what that's?
I, I assume so, but of course, if you wait in line at CVS, it's almost like parking.
Yeah.
The car.
And I'm, I'm just thinking because CB is where we have authorized the medicinal marijuana facilities. So if they're potentially gonna be catering to someone with a disability, is there, I, I don't know, I was just kinda thinking forward on that one.
Well, it is saying you can still get one, you just have to get a conditional use permit.
Okay, so that's.
Two oh nine B, so.
That's still under conditional then?
But, that, that is, again, that's prior existing language, I think they're, you know, I was probably thinking of the old fashioned steak and shakes when that was built. That's probably where that language is coming from, um, so I would think if a Sonic came through, that's probably the best example I can think of. They would just need a conditional use permit, which they would have a drive-through, so they would need a conditional use permit anyway.
Okay.
If, if, it's kind of redundant language, but.
Yeah.
I think that the fact that it says you can still get a conditional use permit would allow it to come in, considering restaurants are allowed.
Okay.
Of course, if it's, if it's delivered with roller skates, then it's okay.
Yeah.
I haven't seen any of those in a long time.
I was done with CB if everybody else was. CB one?
Go ahead.
Um, the, home furnishing and accessory stores, and then item number three, household appliance and furniture stores. Or actually, the first three all kinda seem like furniture stores are in there three times. And I don't necessarily know if we want appliance stores in CB one?
Those are probably uses that were in place at that point in time.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
No question they could be consu- like, uh, one, I, yeah, I guess appliances the only thing that really stands out is different there.
Yeah.
Home furnishing, office products, business equipment, furniture stores, seems like it could be one use. And then do you wanna use household appliances or not, do you want that there or not?
I would say get household appliances out of CB one. I mean, that's, would be more appropriate in AB.
Yeah.
Right now, the only one that we have is at Deer Creek.
Yeah, I think, again, it's probably a dated thing, you know, back, I mean, honestly.
Back when we had.
Probably not that uncommon, although the CB was probably done in the early eighties, so it's, they probably had a, probably had a business like that there, and they didn't wanna make it, uh, you know, non-conforming use right off the bat at the adoption, that's all I can think of. So I will, uh, consolidate, uh, those three into, to one or two and eliminate appliances, is that?
If you wanna make appliances a conditional use.
Okay.
We can consider it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I noticed that pet stores is not included in CB one, but yet we have one.
It's not?
It is not included.
Is it a pet store technically, it doesn't sell pets?
No, but the, under AB, I think is where I saw pet shops, pet sales, food and supplies.
Okay.
So it's in AB as a permitted use, but it's not in CB one. So I don't know if we need to make it a conditional use or what we need to do, but Airdale Antics has been there for a long time.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it as a, uh.
Yeah.
As a conditional use.
You know, if it's, if it's, if it's a retail store, I don't know why you'd wanna make a conditional use if you had.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
If you had, uh, if you actually had pets, where you'd, that's where you'd wanna make the, make it a conditional use, you could, especially if they're selling, I mean, the, the old pet stores are kinda gone, they need to sell dogs anyway.
Yeah, they don't have, yeah.
Right.
But we could make it, uh, I'll come up with a use, but basically it's retail, so I don't know why you'd wanna make them go through conditional use permit process if they're retail.
I would agree with that, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think that, uh, doggy daycare needs to be, certainly.
No question.
No conditional use.
Yeah, and I could even put some language in there to make sure that they're, no, no, no pet sales or, or boarding.
They do do grooming there, so I don't know if we need to clarify that too.
Yeah, they do grooming, but they don't do any overnight, um, overnight boarding, so.
Yeah, I think that's what you're really worried about, I don't think you're really worried about the, I, I'm not as worried about the boarding. Uh, again, it'd be like, I mean, I hate to say it, you look at service versus, you know, if it was basically gonna be boarding when grooming mixed in with all that, I would consider that like more of a service use and one you wouldn't want in that district, but they, I've been in that store, it's, that's pretty much all they do is sell retail pet supplies, right?
And then they do do grooming.
Yeah, I didn't even realize they did that, but I don't really have.
But it's like by appointment only and, yeah.
Consider that an accessory use to the principal use.
Yeah.
What else?
That was it. That's my nitpicky zoning geek.
That's, that's what the zoning ordinance is for.
Oh, I appreciate your guys' comments, I really do. Did you have anything on AB Sandy?
Um, no, not really, um, well, the, in one place you took out linoleum, but you left it in, in here, so you might wanna remove linoleum in here.
Linoleum, the word linoleum, I'll do a word search, oh, I see it right there, six, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is council communication, are there any council communications?
Um, I had something, um, council members, uh, Pardini and Phillips and I attended Richmond Heights had their town hall meeting a week ago Monday, and, um, we went to kinda see how that process worked, to see what it looked like. And then afterwards, they had it before a council meeting, and I noted during their council meeting that they allow for two public forum sessions, one in the beginning and then one at the end, which I thought was a really great thing, cause I feel like we allow people to speak and then they, they share with us, then we talk, and then I think sometimes maybe they have something to say, just sort of based on our discussion, and they don't really get that opportunity, so I just wanted to share that and thought that maybe something we could consider in the future, adding to our agenda as a second public forum at the end.
Uh, I ask our city attorney, uh, have, have you had experience with other communities, uh, doing similar?
I have not, but we can look into what Richmond Heights is doing.
Yeah, I don't, I, I'm, I'm sure that people will have, you know, by, you know, the people that are, that are here today, probably didn't have anything to say when they came in, but they might now.
Yeah, and just lets them, after we talk about it, lets them sort of share a little bit more with us, their thoughts.
Makes sense. We will have to limit those comments to ten minutes apiece. Anything else from the, the town hall?
Um, well, it was really nice because I think they do it once a year in addition to their district meetings, I don't, I'd have to check that, but they had a really nice presentation, their police department is doing, um, this great program, working with people who are soliciting on their streets, which is illegal, but they are, you know, I don't know if you know about this Anthony, I think they're trying to work with other police departments, but, you know, opening a case file, working with them to, um, help them, a lot of them are, you know, alcohol or drug dependent and getting them off that. So it was really great, I don't know if, I think they're gonna start reaching out.
They're partnering with, um, somebody at a hospital, and they have kind of, it's a care, a care approach to working with, um, people that are in their communities.
And they put up some signs that described that, you know, soliciting is illegal in Richmond Heights, but they put, like, if people want to help people out, they put their website on where you can donate, then the money goes to programs that will help people. So it was kind of a nice, and then their city manager, they gave an update on the Heights, uh, construction progress, it's moving along. And then they, city manager gave just sort of a overview of where stuff is, and it was kind of a, you know, it was a nice, just sort of state of the state kinda stuff, about businesses, residential, things like that, so, I don't know if you guys had any.
Yeah, um, I mean, it's something that, um, we've been hearing from the community about, uh, getting a to- town hall system, um, you know, having more opportunity for public input, more opportunity for dialogue. And so that's something that, um, that several of us have talked to Anthony about, of, um, instituting some town hall meetings, or, you know, at least one a year, um, towards the beginning of the year, so.
Webster has one, I think it's seven, um, next Thursday, so I'm gonna go by there.
Next Thursday.
I think it's their first is my understanding, so I hate to say it, we'll see how that goes and get some ideas from that.
Sure, that'd be great.
Is that citywide or per, uh?
Um, citywide they do, I think, once a year, at least that's our impression of what Richmond Heights is doing.
And then, and Webster does citywide once a year. Um, their council members are elected at large, but they, they also do, um, frequent work sessions throughout the year, like, in addition to their council meetings.
Yeah, and then we'd also talked about, um, Richmond Heights does, you know, a lot of cities do ward meetings, so as often or not as they want. Um, so we had sort of talked about trying to get that started too, picking a day, like, you know, the second weekend of the month at a certain time, and, you know, establishing a place and, you know, Ward one would have a meeting, Ward two the next time, or doing something like that, just so we can give people a chance to come up, we can update them on things that are going on, stuff like that.
In a less formal setting, so.
See, if you offered me free coffee, I would show up at any ward.
Snacks too.
Oh, that'd have to be there for sure.
Snacks.
A lot of cities do it differently, some have it at city hall, we did a little research, and, and some like, may have it at like a, a local, you know, coffee shop or a restaurant nearby. It's really whatever, whatever the council person who's putting on that particular ward meeting decides they wanna do, but, um, city hall, we have a schedule if somebody wants to have a ward meeting here, uh, Karen maintains that. You can, we can let you know what, when, when this room is available, and there's also the, uh, room at the firehouse if anyone's interested.
Kinda like you having it in the words.
No, I understand, I, yeah. I think you might get more people if they don't have to go as far.
I appreciate you guys taking the lead on that. I only wanted to do it for fourteen years, but it, it didn't happen, so, uh, I'd like to see it happen.
Yeah, if the council wants to do some sort of a state of the city and, and do a presentation, we can, we could absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other council communication?
Um, just, you'll probably announce it as well, but next week Barry and myself are attending the National League of Cities City Summit in San Antonio. So we will be there representing Maplewood.
And, uh, we'll come back with some ideas and, you know, one of the things that I wanted to mention is that, uh, for, for people that do go on, uh, spend taxpayer money to attend these conferences, uh, we will be providing, between Sandy and I, I'm sure we'll be providing a, a report of those workshops that we attended and the, and come back with some ideas, or things that we can do, uh, that apply to the city of Maplewood. We select, uh, mobile workshops and workshops and seminars and attend general sessions. Uh, some of them are very helpful, some of them not so much so, uh, and we also meet with other, uh, representatives from the state of Missouri, uh, who attend the National League of Cities, uh, as they have a, uh, a separate, uh, event there. So, uh, uh, we'll be providing a report on our activities, uh, at the next council meeting. Any other council communication? And that was the mayor's report, so, does the city attorney have a report?
No.
Okay, the city manager?
Um, nothing, uh, aside from what we talked about, but I, I put in my city manager discussion item. Hopefully this will be a time where if there's a particular topic that I maybe I'm hearing a lot of questions, comments, or concerns about from residents, that I can essentially use this time to alert the council to these memos. Uh, it also allows the council a good opportunity to say, hey, what's going on with the citizen survey, where are we at with this? To make sure I'm meeting your goals and your policy objectives, so I'll, you may not get a memo sometime, other times you will, but I thought this would be a good idea, especially with the potential tax, uh, the fire tax that we're gonna talk about the next meeting, I wanted to give you a heads up. So it's not like you show up at a meeting and you say, hey, what's going on, I'll get you plenty of literature and information out before the meeting. But we're not just gonna ask for this, we're gonna demonstrate what the potential need is, and obviously it'd be up for the council to decide. The second issue on that is the traffic concerns near the Early Childhood Center. Everyone was here for the rezoning request and the, and the concerns with the residents on Burgess. Uh, and, and we've even heard from the school district with, which, what they've tried to do, and just update everybody. We've been doing traffic counts, uh, for the council members that don't drive over the counters all the time, that Sandy and Karen. We've been getting every road and different portions of the road, we're doing that work ourselves, cause then it'll save us money for when we hire Crawford Bunty Braemar to do a traffic study. We've talked to Karen Hall of the school district, we're gonna, we're gonna essentially work together, um, to get this traffic study done. And we're basically gonna take the entire area, basically Big Bend, Manchester, all the way to Flora, and try to get a good snapshot of where traffic is coming from, heading to the ECC, and how fast that traffic's coming. And then hopefully they may be able to come up with some solutions, I'm not convinced that there's gonna be any, obviously an easy fix. But, um, at least when residents in that area, you know, come and express their concerns with the school district, we'll have an actual, uh, independent analysis done by people that do this for a living to say, hey, here are some things you may or may not wanna consider to help alleviate some of these congestions and or traffic concerns. Um, the high school, I've been getting a lot of complaints recently from residents north of the high school. What's happening, I believe, is you're having more kids either with cars or more kids driving, and they're basically kinda flooding those streets. Um, I just want to make sure the council's aware, I offered the council, or the, the school district the ability to park in our Maplewood Family Aquatic Center parking lot, that lot sits vacant, basically ten months or nine months a year. So, uh, the high school is more than welcome to do that, so if you have ni- have residents call and complain, I've conveyed that to, uh, Amber, uh, at the high school. I haven't seen anyone really take advantage of that, it's kind of, um, unfortunate, because that is a lot that is very close to the high school. It'd be really nice if those kids would park there, and or teachers would park there, and not block residents. That's, one of the big concern, complaints I have is students will park there, they can't get out of their driveway, because there's a student's car hanging over the, the driveway. It, it's a, it's a real concern and it, and it is happening. Um, so I just want everyone to know that I've offered that to the school district, uh, and I did this probably six or eight months ago when I first heard of the concerns. Um, and then we'd also had other questions, I just want some stats in there, cause I am getting a lot of questions about speeding and rolling stop signs. And you can see, we are making a concerted effort, meaning the police department, to go through and monitor the traffic throughout the, uh, We are making a concerted effort, meaning the police department, to go through and monitor the traffic throughout the, uh, the city. I know, again, I, I keep bringing up your ward, but we had all those issues with those trucks.
Yeah, yes, there's an issue.
We added, I mean, I know it sounds silly to add that boulder there, but we added a boulder right on the corner, because that was the only way to stop some of these trucks, we've also caught the auto dealer. We've, we've pulled some drivers over and issued some tickets, cause they, we've told them they can unload on Manchester, but they still wanna unload on the cleat and head back. And drive an eighteen-wheeler through some of the most narrow streets we have in town and go in people's yards and tear them up, and I honestly thought. That one, I can't remember her name, she was exaggerating when I heard how bad it was, and I went out there, she was not exaggerating.
No.
They drove ten feet in her yard. With an eighteen-wheeler, tore it up pretty bad, so, we are making efforts, I just want everyone to know that, and then last, I was not aware of this, the, the survey. But it's obviously budgeted and, and I'm, I am working on that, so we'll, we'll get that citizen survey out, um. I mean, I should be getting some information to you within the next, uh, three to four weeks.
Can I ask a question about the traffic survey? Cause we've talked a lot about sort of the need for a comprehensive citywide one, and I guess, I'm, I'm not sure if it's less economical or practical or more economical. But, you know, like, the traffic, you're gonna stop at Flora, but I know, being on Sutton and Elm, you know, it's all coming up that way too. And some are coming this way, some are going that way, is there any thought to how to approach? I know we have immediate concerns here, but those are also pretty bad over there, so what's the thought about sort of?
That could be, that could be a decision when we're going through the budget discussion.
Okay.
Essentially, at that point in time, and I've, I, I believe I talked to council member Pardini about that, and, and, and I mentioned at that time, hey. They're gonna need to do this region anyway.
Sure.
So it's not like we're gonna be paying for something twice, if the council decides that they wanna do a comprehensive citywide survey, we can put that money.
Okay.
In the budget, cause that would cost, obviously.
Right, right.
But I can start getting some budget estimates.
That'd be great.
Going through the budget discussion process, you guys will know exactly what it would.
Yes, thank you.
We could get, we could get moving on that.
Cause that's, I mean, that's the number ones, at least when I was door knocking, that people talk about is traffic.
I will tell you, this is just, I mean, it's a statement in any city, people will tell you that there's a lot of speeding, we will go out, we'll set the. The, the, the traffic counters can test speed as well, and, and the police, it's usually not as, as bad as most people say. That doesn't mean that there's not speeding going on, but.
Mine is just, there's the volume and the manner in which they're driving, it's not, it's not necessarily just the speeding, it's that they're, you know, stopping. Or not stopping at a stop sign, or they're stopping and looking at the Mao House, and then they just keep driving, you know, I mean, it's things like that, and there's a lot of children.
That might be me, actually.
In our neighborhoods, you know, and the bus stops, so they're, you know, a lot of the bus stops are located at intersections, and so, um, many a time. I mean, my kids know not to cross the street if there's a car even stopped, so.
Yep, I, I agree with you, we'll definitely, I'll definitely at least have some preliminary numbers for you for when we're doing our budget.
Okay.
Process, which I think I told you the last time, uh, department, it's'll be getting those in, um, January, January, February, we'll be playing around with it. I anticipate our first work session starting, uh, end of March, uh, early April.
That'd be great, thank you.
Sure.
Could I ask for?
Can you look into, uh, uh, pursuing grant opportunities for this too?
I can.
Appreciate it.
Would it be possible to get, like, another, another piece of data, would it be possible to get a map, um, that identifies. The speed limit on all of the streets?
Yes.
Like, by color or something? Um, I, it would be helpful for me to just sort of see, like, what's to eyeball, what are the speed limits where? I know we've been doing it sort of individually by ordinance, um, and it would be helpful to just catch up to speed on what, you know, what is where.
Yeah, we can, we, um, work with, partner with Webster for GIS services, so we can have our.
Okay.
Contact who's always saying, if you have any ideas and, and, uh, just the council's aware, if you have any other mapping requests you'd like to see, we can. We have that ability to get that done.
Okay, thank you.
I think the, um, related to the, the traffic study and where, um, school bus stops are and things like that, again. We need to coordinate with the, with school district, um, because if there's a, you know, concerns around the bus stops. Um, that could potentially be a higher priority than, um, than other things. Um, and I just was gonna ask, related to the, the parking, um, at the high school, are you then, are you, since they're not using it right now. And we're still seeing complaints, are you gonna follow up with?
I plan on calling, I have a note to, I, I was gonna call either, um, planned on calling Amber just to follow up, cause I initially reached out to Amber. And then also, I can talk to, uh, Dr. Hall as well.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
All I can really do is encourage that.
Right.
Um, I know when I was in high school, if I drove, I had to park in a particular lot or I couldn't drive to high school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, it, it doesn't seem that hard to me. Uh, we've got a big lot there, it would be, really be nice to keep those students out of the residential areas. Cause, um, I've had several that have, have mentioned it to me, and, um. You know, I, I wouldn't want that in front of, I mean, constantly in front of my house, if there's something else available, when there's not something else available, it's a little different situation. You know, sometimes it's just gonna be crowded no matter what you do, but we have a good sized lot there, and we've always, always allowed this school, they've been very gracious in asking, hey, can we use this? For drop-off or pickup, like I said, I, you can use it anytime you want, is basically what I told them, except for obviously the pool, which.
It doesn't really.
Pools there, they don't need it.
I had two questions about the traffic enforcement reports, requests. Um, so one was like, I, I see the, you know, we got the numbers from the chief on just the total number of tickets. Per year and the, the fact that having two new officers, um, with the, the Prop P, um, is helping with that. Um, and I was wondering, would he be able to provide more information on like, what those tickets are for?
Sure.
Um, and I'm curious, cause my, some of my constituents have been concerned especially about rolling stops versus, you know, so. Are, are we really seeing, um, more ticketing for that? And then, um, you know, how much is, like, how much of those tickets is on like the residential roads versus like the big arterial roads? Um, just so that we can be conveying to folks, like, yes, it's actually, you know, it's actually happening or. And then one other, a GIS-related question, do you know if our, um, police stop data is. Geospatially referenced?
I don't believe it is, I don't, I, I'm quite.
Like, they don't enter a location?
Everything we've done so far to date is, the only thing that's not planning or development related or road condition related is, uh, fire hydrant maps. I don't think the police have done anything with, uh, the mapping, I could, I could just keep.
Have, okay, okay, just kind of wondering, there's some, some questions that, um, I've had, it would be super easy if some of it is geo-referenced. But I know it might not be.
I'm really not sure how they would, how they would do that unless they manually entered every ticket, but I'm not sure, I, I'll ask if they have it, I would, I guess the answer is no.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, sorry, one more question. Sorry, the citizen survey, Anthony, did you say, when you said you were gonna get something in the next few weeks, do you mean, get an RFP started?
Yes.
Okay, great, just clarifying that.
Okay, then, uh, item number twenty-one is the motion to hold a closed session.
Do we need, we do need one, right? We need.
I think we, we talked about waiting until November, after November nineteenth.
To send out.
Yeah, to, to make that determination, and John's not here, so, uh, I think we can handle those issues. Uh, you know, with, with, without meeting in a closed session.
Okay.
I thought that, were we definitely not?
Is that okay with everyone?
I mean, I, I'm fine with that, but I don't know if there was something we need, do we need?
I thought, I thought we were supposed to have one.
I think we were, I don't know.
I, I don't have a problem.
I'm prepared if you would like to have one.
Okay.
We may as well just do it briefly.
Okay. Motion.
Let's have, go have this conversation.
Motion to hold a closed session?
Second.
For contractual man.